So. You got a place to move.
Hi. Not so far along, I mean, it's very dear, but I would like to just mention a few names, I think of other projects that are or where I do not own the agenda. The relationship with the commission is being very important for adding a few on the agenda after a couple of people have been Peter Far and staff are items. Uh, if anything is afforded and available by whom, the commission will see public time through emails and then require meeting staff in person, public time will not be accepted by whom. Um, roll call please.
Commissioner Harmon.
Uh.
Commissioner Kun.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner DeRazo is absent. Commissioner Via Sari?
Yes.
Commissioner Madden?
Yes.
Commissioner Latine?
Yes.
We are in court.
Uh, Commissioner Harmon, you go with the question.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before I end, comments on the events that are concerned, are there any improvements?
Um, I'll stay on the agenda.
Correct. I think there are much improvements which are.
Okay.
Okay, um, affirmation on their high, correct.
Motion back.
It's good, um, I mean, after that public time, I didn't come down the agenda, but there's a number of years' time. Uh, so, we're going to move on. Uh, we have an essence of progress and interest on our study session. Is that up? Um, when I miss, I think I started my study session on the agency, the body of, um, that. Thank you, Mr. Sher. Slides come up, uh, we got here to have a sunset on MTC, we care to have a policy and. The objective is by no view of the transit board, it needs housing policies in preparation for a public hearing in September. And following the staff report to. Okay, not very valuable, uh, this slide shows all the milestones, uh, there are the same dates and notes that are in the staff report, uh, we've had three joint meetings with the city council leading up to tonight, uh, where we were outlining that due to the limited amount of time that is provided, uh, that the city would focus on meeting these T O C compliant efforts, uh, we focused on meeting the minimum requirements of T O C compliance, uh, in order to maintain eligibility for regional transportation funding, uh, important to note that there's been a policy that the city wants to expand in the future, uh, uh, we have that, uh, available to us. Also want to know for this meeting, we are slaying the T O C policy compliance toward the two parts, uh, first will be the housing policies, uh, and tonight we've an overview, uh, leading to a public hearing in September, but the intended council hearing in October. Arc is supporting our efforts in housing policy in the same manner that they're supporting our effort in housing element implementation and and with me tonight, we've chipping the apart, uh, who is our, one of our primary contacts, uh, where we work on the housing policy. The second part of the T O C compliance is the density, intensity and parking policies. The plan is we'll have an overview of that at the September sixteen meeting, uh, and the public hearing in October and down to in November. As noted in the staff report, there, this two, this second part could be put to twenty twenty-six, uh, depending on the MTC's grant funding and, uh, and the deadlines for T O C compliance. The D O C policy provides a menu of numerous housing policies that the city can achieve. There are three categories, production, preservation and protection, and the city must adopt two of each category. In prior joint sessions with council, staff presented, uh, the whole menu and a list of recommended, uh, policies that 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 the city focus on, uh, which council and the commission endorse. Many of these programs, many of these policies overlap housing element programs that we are also committed to. Uh, those are represented with, uh, numbers and letters in in parentheses in the third column. The list actually has four policies in protection, uh, that could be adopted, but the intent is that, uh, staff will pursue, will recommend pursuing the two of these four that have required a least amount of of commitment in order to, uh, achieve the T O C compliance. However, since most of them, most of the production items are also, uh, have a, uh, a housing element program associated with it, we still would be bringing forward ordinance and policies on the, on, on the other protection item, they just might not uh, have the content that the T O C policy requires. So, we're going to briefly go through each one of these, uh, with the, uh, overall contents that are required, um, and what the plan is for moving forward. Uh, most of this, I believe, all of this is in the staff report, uh, so we're not going to read through everything that are on these slides, but the slides are available, if you need to come back to them, if if the commission has any questions. So the first one is, uh, production policy one, this inclusionary housing, uh, this is something that the city ordinance and ordinance for, and, uh, to achieve compliance, uh, there would be, uh, minimal changes if any, uh, in order to achieve T O C compliance with our existing ordinance, we may have to make some wording changes, uh, uh, but, uh, overall, we're, we're in good position. Next is production policy number seven, this is about about development certainty, and it's, it called on the city to take some aspects of S D three thirty that are already in the law, uh, but putting this in our ordinance and but without a sunset date, currently the law has a sunset date. Uh, for development certainty is primarily about vested rights and, uh, a five thirty limit with the streamlining efforts we've undertaken, uh, we don't see any issue with us adopting those. I can't imagine if we would have a project that comes forward that would have five thirty, so maybe a rule that we won't uh, should be issued for. Now, in order to get credit for this item, we also have to do protection, protection policy number two, which is also an aspect that S D three thirty, uh, will get to that later. Next item is condo conversion restriction, so this is preservation, preservation policy four. So the city has existing condo conversion ordinance, uh, but for housing element and T O C compliance, uh, we do have to update that. Uh, to be clear, condo conversions are about taking an existing rental building and turning them into condos. It's not about getting a project approved to be condo from the start, uh, it's when you have an older a, what, a building that exists, which is typically older, uh, and is proposed to be converted, uh, into ownership units, and one of the concerns with those in, uh, in, 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 in the housing preservation industry is that these are older rental units, they're probably less expensive than a new rental unit. Whether or not they're truly affordable is 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 not certain, but they're more likely to be affordable, uh, and, uh, not because of subsidies, but just because of the market, uh, than, uh, a new unit, so. To comply with the T O C policy, we would have to adopt a one for one replacement that for every converted rental unit, the project must provide a comparable one or two in the roof. Uh, the T O C policy allows for two exceptions to be adopted, uh, and staff does recommend to purchase both of them, and that is if ninety percent of units to be converted are going to be bought by the current occupants, then we don't have to do any roofie or 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 the one to one replacement. Also, all the converted units are going to be restricted to be affordable, we don't have to do the one for one replacement. Uh, ten to twelve, first way to purchase and, uh, tenants that are displaced would receive relocation assistance. Uh, so then this is an item that, uh, we do have to do aspects of this for the housing element as well, uh, and we will be bringing forward a ordinance to adopt the T O C compliance. Next is the one with the longest title, uh, preventing displacement from subs- substandard conditions and associated code enforcement activity. This is effectively cases where a building is allowed, uh, is not maintained well and, uh, starts to suffer from substandard conditions, uh, and then the process of doing code enforcement, uh, how can we make it so that a tenant, uh, an occupant, whether the tenant or owner, uh, is not displaced or reduce the chances of of it being displaced, and on the flip side, how can we make it so that it's more likely for an owner not to let that situation happen in the first place? So there are two, uh, hats that, um, are in the T O C policy that also happen in the housing element program. One is to set up an amnesty program where owner that has, uh, rents the unit out can get a waiver of some of the fines and fees, uh, associated with doing the work, uh, in exchange for, uh, providing your habitability plan that shows that the tenant can stay while the work is being done, or that, uh, there is uh, relocation assistance if the tenant has to move out. Also is required, uh, that the, that the tenant that was rented be allowed to return and, uh, there'll be limits on the types of rent increases that could happen. Uh, that's the amnesty program approach, that is the one that we'll recommend giving the pursuit of T O C compliance. The other, uh, approach is a grant alone program that is provided to homeowners in units that are substandard. We are still doing that because we have a housing element program for that, the differences are housing element programs specifically call for the amnesty program and the grant program to only be in low use or certain, but those are certain geographical areas, uh, primarily for San Bruno, uh, that are all on the, uh, east side of El Camino. The T O C policy, uh, requires the city to adopt one of the two to apply citywide, uh, and be based on the income category of the, of either the owner or the tenant. So one is geographic and the other is going to be based on the income of of owner and and tenant. Uh, because in general, the owner has the property, therefore they have more access, uh, to funds to do increases, whereas the vendor does not have access to any funds if 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 they have, then the tenant has to be repaired, uh, we are recommending to focus on the amnesty program because we think that will, uh, have the ability to help more people. Next, uh, we go to the protection policy, as early as the beginning, we're going to go through four of them, we only have to do two of them, to the level that the T O C policy, policy requires, uh, we do have plans to do all four because of the housing element. But just on eviction, um, there is a state law about this and basically it's that, uh, uh, you are going to, uh, you cannot evict a tenant unless you have just caught, uh, if you terminate the tenancy, uh, without what's caused, then there has to be, uh, there's a tendency to get something out of it, which is covered in other protection policy. One of the concerns with, uh, the T O C wording is that it calls for the city to have to receive, calls for the owner, property owner to have to file notice with the city, uh, every time, I mean, an eviction is 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 asserted. We don't have, we actually do not have resources staffing to receive them, maintain them, and if we're receiving and maintaining them, there is the implication that, uh, we're following up on calls without them, we're, we're looking into them to make sure they're done right, uh, while the T O C policy doesn't say we have to do any of those things, uh, staff has considered that having a regulation that requires us to take the notice that hold, hold and make that notice implies that we do something about it, uh. If we don't have to do that in order to fulfill the housing element requirement in the, but fulfilling the housing element requirement for just call eviction, if it is sufficient to simply say, uh, the owner, uh, still has to, still is limited by just call eviction, except for having to file a notice, then that will be the recommended path, uh, if it turns out that to meet, uh, the city expectations with just call eviction, we still have to do, uh, the receiving of the notices, then we will probably, or to fulfill the T O C policy as well too. So that, that is something we are still working on, and we'll, we'll know more when we come back in September, but in September, there'll even be an ordinance that fulfills the state, but not T O C, but it will still be a just call eviction ordinance, or it will, uh, fulfill the state housing element program and the T O C. Next, uh, protection two, this is the one tied to the prior, uh, production policy number seven, uh, there's two parts of S D three thirty that, uh, we would have to adopt without a sunset, again, you were technically the law right now, but we do have a sunset date, uh, and that is that, uh, if a owner is going to tear down existing units, uh, they need to be replaced, so if you're going to tear down two units, you can't just build one, you would need to build at least two. Uh, now, if you're going to tear down a protected unit and there, uh, uh, then it needs to be replaced with, with an authority. Uh, the city does not have a lot of subsidized affordable units, um, protecting units is a broader category than just even substandard units, but, um, there are not a lot of them out there, uh, so we're not anticipating that this will be a number two, but the tricky case is where someone had a triflex and wanted to, uh, just go to single family house there, they would not be able to do that, currently that's the law, but there would have to be a sunset on that. The other asset is, uh, that, uh, displaced, low income tenants would have to get relocation assistance if any is demolished and persuaded at a reasonable rent to come get in. Again, that's the law right now, it's just going to be a sunset there, a sunset maybe on that. Okay, protection number eight, this is tenant relocation, uh, this one we intend to meet the housing element program in the T O C, uh, typically put, uh, a tenant that is evicted, uh, without cause of fault, uh, would have to receive at least three months' rent, uh, the city can't choose to limit this to just lower income and moderate income tenants, um, and then this is a tactic we will be bringing forward in September that will meet both the housing element program as well as this. And then the last one, uh, tenant anti harassment, uh, there is already state prohibition on, uh, harassment of tenants, but it's not defined what that means, so, uh, this policy and the housing element program would require us to define what those are. Uh, now, the T O C policy specifically calls for the fact that, uh, we will say that, uh, that the city attorney can take legal action, that, that, that there is uh, a case of, of, uh, that is harassed by a property owner. In the event that we can fulfill the housing element program without specifically calling out that the attorney has, has uh, the ability to take legal action, uh, we may recommend that because it gave it a, even though it's not required, if it is implied, uh, or suggested that, uh, the city attorney can't take legal action on these cases, uh, then the city council needs to make the call whether or not we want to, uh, stack that, uh, because we don't have a revenue source that could be able to, uh, towards this, to develop at this time. Uh, if, just like with the just cause, if it is determined that in order to meet the housing element program, we have to do the same thing the T O C is asking for, uh, we will recommend that, if it is determined that we can meet the housing element program without taking on a, uh, a resource commitment that, uh, we don't have the money for, then we will focus just on meeting the housing element program because we will avoid that two protective program. So that, that's all the programs, this is a summary slide, uh, we're able to go back to any of the other slides, uh, if you have question or comments, um, in summary, if it says T E B under achieving compliance, those are the ones that, uh, we may only bring documentation that fulfills the housing element, uh, for the other one, we will be bringing forward the policy that, uh, do we, uh, what the T O C is asking for, and with that, sure, that's really important.
I have a question, my, that's been, yeah, quick, exactly, but in my, um, policy seven, the second one, you shouldn't mean come back to them here, but.
Uh, yes, so, uh, protection two is the like, protection two is the policy that we have to do in order to get credit for protection seven, and they both have to do S D three thirty, uh, so if we want to get credit for protection seven, which is admittedly a rather easy lift, uh, then we also have to do protection two, uh, which, as we looked at it, we don't believe is going to, uh, be a major issue. Uh, most of our new development projects are not proposing to tear down existing housing, uh, when they do, I'm not aware that any of the proposals put less than what we're doing there. So we believe the combination of production seven and protection two is strategically a good set for us to adopt.
Thank you. I have one question, I'd rather to representation, one more, you know, um, I've got a, I don't even remember if it's like, you know, that people probably didn't, uh, place each other, I mean, it, it's mentioned, but it's probably in part of that. Question of how, uh, you talked about, um, um, oh, no, if I, uh, if you're, if you're a merchant, you're selling, you know, you're not, you know, or selling company.
Um, we don't have that information, I, my patients tell me they're fine, um, uh, because it is strategically a good plan if you are building, uh, an apartment building and you either, and you're not a company that nobody wants to keep that for this is forever, uh, if you're a company that wants to have such a possibility of burning any condos or not, you normally build it, could need to build a condo upfront when you have a map upfront, uh.
Okay, okay, okay. Yeah.
Okay.
That you were building upfront, you mean, and the whole of the.
Uh, can you, would you push a little?
If I'm saying correctly, um, were these, were, were these two, um, Nancy, I mean, we're on cloud, I was, I was, what did you say, what did you go up, I, I hope it would be converted to.
I don't know that, uh, we can look into that, um, uh, but as I said, there, there, there are some there are many cases that I, I know a more modern, uh, apartment building, big deal now that, uh, comes along with a condo map upfront, uh, and they may not record that for a long time, uh, or they may never record it, but they get the approval upfront just because those would never be called a condo diversion because they got entitled upfront of the condo, the, the cases where they built this apartment, um, without a condo map, and they come later and do the condo thing.
So, they say we have, uh, very many buildings, all of that kind of, they're, they're for the tenants, against the landlords, um, their visits may be, you know, financially for the city, you know, there. Um, so the financial aspect, potential loss in development, and then revenue that is earned from that, I think if this were a bigger city, uh, you know, maybe we can, we lose a lot more development, we're a small city, so maybe the, the dollars from the, um, with, but the, the revenues and potentially be awarded by the public, but have you thought of it in that way?
Yes, yes, and, and that's, that is why, uh, you know, absent hearing of a lot of public engagement, uh, sort of the housing element and, uh, in recent years, the staff are conviction is to do what is necessary to qualify for the penalty. Uh, and if over time, we hear more reports of, of beating issues in San Bruno, uh, that could be an opportunity to talk about doing more, uh, but
or, right, I mean, it's really, you know, so we do, we did spend a big, like, ten million dollars, or it wasn't a big number, like, did, do we have a feeling, do you really think about how much development would be lost? It's, you know, you can understand what I'm trying to say with this, but.
So, so for example, within contemporary housing, it's always there, so we're not doing any of that, the condo conversion, you're not even going to need new development, you're, 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 it's harder for, and we're not changing the fact that if you build something new with a map upfront, yes, yes, yeah, condo conversion, to me, is, uh, uh, not going to impact the, it, it really is impacts the ability of a property owner of a apartment complex from maximizing a profit, like, uh, uh, but not, not on the developments, on, on the just on eviction, I don't see that also, I really don't see that affecting development either, um. For tenant relocation, for, for things like tenant relocation, uh, it will add cost to a project where existing rental building is being torn down and something like built, um. And we don't have a lot, uh, currently, we don't have a lot of property zone that have existing apartments that have been torn down and built, much more gets, now, the tenants don't receive that, so, uh, now, we have a lot of underutilized commercial women that we are zoning to allow mixed use and allow intensification, um, I worked in some cities where there was a lot of rebuilding of existing apartment buildings and tenant relocation and things like that would definitely affect that, so I don't see it affecting us that much, but, but that is saying, as we go through this next round of, uh, updating our grant policy, we, we are going to allow a greater number unit on sites that have existing apartments and, and we should recognize that the, the, the project value and the cost, which is going to be brought up in our next year's budget, will have to factor in, we, we're adding a cost. So, for the most part, I don't think these will have a major impact on development in San Bruno, I think the biggest one is that we have no inclusionary housing for apartment now, and we added it, uh, development certainty is a positive, uh, for property owners. You know, it certainly is a positive, uh, for property owners, uh. And it's a common convergence. Don't stop a developer from lacking it. And the eviction ones really, uh, uh, aren't applied to, uh.
Well, yeah, yeah, it's gonna be a small person, right? I also, you know, inside, but I, I, I would prefer that we really do condos and versions. Really, we, we're part of the complex. Uh, there's, it's like a, 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 a contract, a, a, to build condos or new condos. Yeah, I think this is like, uh, they use with to, to put more force in helping. Yeah, that, that, that people behind them, definitely. Um, but that, that's just one of the policies. Now, as Luke said, um, like the, the financial aspect and the fairness that, that. Very, very, um, tense, friendly, if no, just actually no policies with that landlord ready. Would you consider balancing that with things that landlord, and I, I can't think of a problem in my head, you're at Y D, but. You're implementing these that are for the tenant. Okay, we'll throw some landlords and. That down the road.
Yeah, so, uh, so hopefully, hopefully, eight up there. Um. Development certainly, certainty is certainly not the tenants, uh, that are so popular or she would want to develop. Uh, which is why it's in the production, uh, in production framework. And what are the preventive dispensement from substantial conditions? Uh, will, it, it will be providing a financial incentive for owners. To maintain their.
What, what is the, I, I don't see it better. I think, I see it as a penalty, um, and. And, you know, kind of a forceful nature because it's going to be harder to, I mean, throughout all of this, right, it's going to be harder to do this again. And so I, my, I know a lot of people, you know, it's, it's all end or Stanford just has a lot of these kind of policies. Are hard to raise the rent and then sort of stop. It's hard to get people out, hard to raise the rent. And so they're not able to renovate and correct the building. I, I'm afraid of that happening here, but. And so maybe if you threw something the other way, where, um, you say just cause fiction is an opposite. The, also just cause for, for both sides. Some, something like that, but.
I, I, I think also, the city is undertaking other initiatives. That, that one could argue is going to benefit property owners a lot.
Okay.
Uh, this, this package of things, the, the, the entire. Category in the P O C, uh, section is just valid in registration. Um, there's a housing production aspect, but it's really about, about the, uh, uh. Our tenant because, and the state has a, they're still that, but there will be other. Tasks that the state is working on outside of this that, that, uh, is looking at, but that's a shot.
Yeah, you're right. Um. Okay, so, so then I, that we go forward. Maybe I'll have to keep this in mind, but remember. It's not like a firm, but happens to also in front of my mind, but because it's definitely, it's definitely. Yeah, I will be able to do that. Thank you.
Well, um, uh, 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 I'm ready to share and learn. Um, you know, I, I know you have a, um, older, uh, apartment. And obviously you feel not great, if you have a landlord who allows you to raise, and then fill in. Under that, those brands, the living unit, or something. Way more affordable and, you know, like, when we, when we locate first. Um, so, um, and, like, fire, like, oh, you know, the blue sign, that's where the, yeah. That's, that's. It's like, you, you didn't spend what you need for the lack of maintenance, because it was written for, you know, maybe for, and again, this. You know, I think, like. If someone, though, don't somebody, but, but it was like, you know, it, it, it. If they find a situation, you don't have, you know, like, if on, uh. You know, that's, that's. But it's, and, and that. You know, for instance, it's sort of classic, anything with, you say, in New York, you're not doing anything that's going to cost you thirty. Like, the costs are very low, so you would not be allowed to raise the rent, that would recover the cost, if it is, if it's there. No, you mean, but. Um. Um. Anyway, we'll, we'll be careful and, um, um, that. On the condo conversion, well, uh, that's, that's, on the condo conversion topic. Um, where everything is, you know, you were, we're just talking about. You could say like that, or there's a better company, they do the hundred conversion on, you know, a block of ten apartments. Two of which were, where would you have to build any apartment, you know, for ten houses, like eight, five, they want to sell, sell them for this, or, or do that.
So, uh, since, since we're looking at whether or not it's, uh, focused on edge management.
Mm-hmm.
Whether they're for tenants or just whether they have low income, certain things. And, and, and there is no, like, there wasn't, that, that, that.
The, 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 the residential, so rent then qualifies under the A M I muscle, you just think.
And, uh, there, there's definitely community and roofies and. Uh, I can't imagine that, uh, most. Most proposers of a condo conversion wouldn't focus on community. Now, it has happened to be a, uh, um, a larger company that. Uh, while they're doing this, they're also, uh. They have another project in town where they're creating more units through some other way, they wouldn't leave the roofies, but, uh, uh. It is, I, I don't know that we're going to have a lot of condo conversion because it is so difficult. Uh, it's difficult to build, it's not difficult to build condos, it's difficult to sell it in the first fifteen years that they're. Because of the, of liability. But building them is, like, just building it, that's why, that's why a lot of, of the companies rent them. Until the liabilities are, and then you sell them.
You just, you don't, you don't build it off of that. You don't, you can't get that done.
But, but, but you can knock it off. Whereas if you have an apartment building from nineteen ninety, the amount of work it's going to have to do. To lead the code, turn it into condos now, is, I think, pretty incredible. So I don't know that. I don't know that if we did nothing, that we had condo conversion. And I don't know if we put these structures in, it's going to change the number of condo conversions we get. Uh, because she just couldn't, that was one of the reasons for it. Uh, I'm not seeing likely to happen, however, um. It, it, it will make it harder to, there's no question about that.
You, you, uh, like. You think the possibility, or, or your building, you hear it, like, if you're going to have to do that, or not, or this building, something others there. Bring it down before that, you know, you know, but. Um. I wonder if, um, the, if there's probably fiction, um, about the notice, like. Do you have any, I don't know how many of the changes we got anyway, but, I mean, the property was like ten, not hundred.
I think I've seen a moment, I've got to get out. Um, I know that it probably been a renovation about thirty.
Yeah.
Uh, that means eviction notices, um, and notice to terminate their fees. Which can have been for eviction notice is what we, we, they are, uh, and we are looking for this at other cities and thinking of very low touch rates. If you approve, basically, a blue form where the landlord submits it. It's in the data, it's, you would have to have someone on staff that could take queries from renters who are like. I want to prove that they're getting, uh.
Yeah, that, that was exactly what I was, like, I was like, how much staff effort do this, or if you just have a form, and it's, you know this, and then. Somebody says, I don't think they filed, I don't know, it's a check, maybe they're, and either they're not, but like.
That, that's the word, that's the, that's the word.
It's like, we have grit, probably, and, uh.
I mean, I mean, if we do have to, we will find a way, uh, I'll just say that. Uh, we should not underestimate the, the challenges of maintaining multiple systems over time. Um. And so if you don't have to do it and the planning council is accepting of us not doing it, that would be our responsibility. Uh, but I think there, there's a common point, edge management is defined, uh, if it's necessary to, to do that in order to, uh. Satisfy the state without another program, then we'll, then we do.
You know, the, the thing with the real eviction, I think, is if you're like, no fault fiction, no, there is a fifth part of like. Well, I think, um, I certainly like, uh, when I, I'm a dollar of the change or a cause, then, um. Like, I don't know, I, I feel it's not. I, I think they certainly want that there's capacity and not, they think there's enough for problems. Uh, if they're like, I don't know what's going to be come on staff and council or what everyone. Or if I have to, for realizations, because the event of, of all the actions, cover everyone. So I think with that, it's already a lot of, you know, our, 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 uh, uh, you, 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 you.
But, but no, but I, but I believe that the general opinion, it's not whether the unit is, looks like, for the, the, technically. Yeah, yeah, so there would be real attention, attention for a lot of time.
Yeah, but then, so, you know, like, if you're a, like, by your own, you're about, you do it, and you don't follow by it, although in a person, it's still a hard shit. Have someone maybe like, he's, uh, uh, to move, but then, with no reason, right? Like, if you've done something bad, it's much trash. Like, if you're, you're, it's fine, whatever, so like, that, for, for, for no fault of the change thing. This is not unreasonable, you know, like, oh, when, like, you have someone that I'm doing a word, but. I think landlords that need to have a kitchen, you know, the rules around one, the fall time, you have to, you have to.
Okay. So listen to this conversation, it's, it's a question, you know, we're already covered by rent people, and saying we're through the state, I think. Are we just codifying, yeah, into what we're doing, or are we going, you know?
Yeah. What they're asking me to do is to codify that same law, yes, um, and they also are asking to, like, leave some one special thing in there. And that could be, um, uh, making, uh, significant houses, a part of it, which are completely wrong. Um, it could be something, or a feature that like that, I think, I think that's another feature, but. This is, I mean, but I don't, I don't have to go, um. And, uh, they, they just, we just, we just have rent control. Uh, for the.
Yes, but the state basically defines that I, I don't want to pay a rent, and rent not by fifty percent. It's not a just cause for that, so, right, the rent, if you raise your rent by thirty five, and they reduce it, that is not just cause for. But when there would be a fact that they got rent until like a five percent plus T P I.
I'm not, yeah, it's five percent, so, I mean, I mean, it's not, it's not the strict rent control, I don't think that makes sense, it's, uh. Uh, it is a same line, that's innovation, it's the housing, uh, for rent, yeah, but, um. But it's, it is a form of like, innovation, yes, yeah, but I mean, it's, you know, you're, it a lot of, it's seventy percent. I, 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 I. And, and this attempt is not codified at rent's innovation feature, it, it just codified with the subdivision features of that, so.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, in fact, like, you're right, but that's, the rent control, the aspect of, the rent segmentation aspect that comes with the just cause. And common public sector define that review may, and, 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 just, 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 uh. Um, anyway, I, I think that would be, I'm curious whether staff have concerns around, whether you're leaning towards doing a relocation for, 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 and, and, so. I, no, I'd, 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 a former renter, you have a, you know, it's all, that's somewhat of a, of, I mean, you know, like, I'm. From those, it doesn't make sense. Requiring relocation in one of your cause condition, it's usually, regarding, where you are.
Yeah, and, uh, at this point, we, we are not certainly what we were, uh, this will be a one way. Kind of thing that, you know, the, the ordinance is going to say something, and it easily be changed to say. It's everybody or it's just, it's, I think there's, there's. There's a good point that, that, because this is snowball, um. Should anybody get something, there's also the flip side, which is if. You know that you have to pay certain income groups more, are you going to not rent to them?
Right, yeah, for, for, you, you get a hard to pay the apartment, then you increase the spread of the, your income, where you were more renting, yeah.
Yeah, so, so that could be a reason to just make it the same way.
Yeah, uh, and my last question was on the, there was a thing that my team were asking me here. And I'm thinking something that's not too good, you know, they're, they're, like, in state, uh, in other states, or something, we think that's, right? I think that's not.
So, so it's actually not in state law, but the P O C policy has, has a, that would be, that.
But that, that, we, we don't have to pass a whole bunch of that, but then you could, then, you know.
But, but the news is with another of these ordinance, ordinances, the, uh, N C C A nine is in working with the, uh, with them on model ordinances. Um, and so all of the communities looking to the N C C, the public, when you create, it's a, so that also means that. And you're thinking the same, no worries, maybe the same as, you know, um, but that, that, there's something to rely on. We're not having to send a lot of door legal staff, uh, trying to figure it out, and they're doing it for you.
And even all that consistent, from, they, 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 they value in terms of. If you need to get water, and they don't, like, specialize, I mean, they really have their, their, uh. All right, um, that was all of the.
Thank you. Just a quick question. I understand, you know. Uh, if there's a large menu, um, policies to choose from, that I'm, certainly maybe choosing, the ones that we're talking about very separately. But were there other ones that maybe we weren't as, um, difficult for landlords or for maybe not development, but, um. Things that may not be as taxing on that?
Well, overall, uh, if, uh, the staff report had a link to the, uh. Staff report from when we first introduced the veteran section, and that had, uh, and it, it, it notes why certain ones were. Were, I mean, certain ones don't apply to us, certain ones would have required, uh, uh, for. Uh, ongoing, um. Unboard funding allocation, uh, so these were the ones that were. For, I mean, in, in, the, the, the final law, for, for those who are held there to get steering, the city said, these were the low income group, they will take that. For those, for sure, the property rights itself, you might like that, but we're, we also look at it as what can we afford to do? And, um. And, um, what is, what runs up most with what the state's gonna require us to do and how we're gonna do it? And so, of the ones that we don't already have, something with a housing element setting to do it. Um. Inclusionary housing, which are existing in four and three three case. Um, the only other ones that don't have a housing element program, saying we have to do something like that anyway, are the ones where we're codifying state law. And just not even the sunset, uh, and. It's, it's, it's highly probable that the state will take away the sunset anyway. And so, if you look across the, across the menu, uh, uh. We were very strategic in, in thinking things that either the state was already gonna make us do. Uh, or were not gonna be much of a change. For the organization, but just how the kitchen, it's similar to anything, something. I'm telling you, if you see what they're gonna do, and you're asking, is it gonna be this way? Common coverage, it was certain, it's fifty ten and fifty two, uh, so. Um, I think the short answer is, is, uh. It may look like, you know, a lot of things that are impacting popularers, uh. But it would have been one to have been important, yeah.
Thank you, thank you so much for the time, you're excellent.
Okay, yeah, yeah, uh, so, this, this, um. One more second for that, uh. This is not that, I don't know, but this is something that. To joint sessions and other transmission, we, we've been talking about for over. Uh, and, uh. At the staff portion, and, and, which is the council adopted the initiative that we were hoping they would adopt. Already launched it, it's, it's about, yeah. Uh, so I wanted to get, that happened on July twenty second, uh, when we give the transmission, it was some. The presentation that was made in council, uh, it is not exactly the same, there are some things that are actually new. Uh, uh, so you'll get, uh, even better information, but I wonder, walking through, uh. Very rejected is a piece mission on, on the initiative that the council launched, uh, primary purpose of initiative is to strengthen the physical base. Uh, by relying on these housing and economic development policies. Uh, but council, we started with a conclusion, uh, we have seen, we've lost opportunities for investments. And when we look at what our neighbors have done, at the same time, uh, we definitely lost opportunity. Uh, current economy is not strong right now, uh, but that is the perfect time to. Look at our rules, and initiative is intended to make us more, a more attractive investment option for when you're coming. Effect. That's, it's, 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 it's. Superfirst dot com, and the mission and council, like you're on work, uh, for its own problem past year. Uh, council launched it. About a month ago, uh, they adopted the goal objective strategy in timeline that I will touch on in the presentation. Part of transition, don't try, uh, for an overview, the face is ordinance twelve eighty four. Uh, that was the, uh, what I will call both the total ordinance, uh, passing nineteen seventy seven. Uh, it says that you're gonna increase heights over three stories or, or fifty feet, you're gonna increase the number of units. Uh, or households that are on an existing residential owned property. You're going to build a same old parking structure, uh, and also you're going to change the, uh, um. Road configuration of a couple of those that is in the building. That needs a vote to be there. And so, on the one hand, that might be C five, and in nineteen seventy seven, it would be a one five. Then as things change, uh, we are required by the housing elements. That we adopted, like, in August, we had to make the housing element say what the state wanted us to say. Uh, some of the things the state wanted us to do are arguably very good, and we took it, some. Are things that the state just argued that we agree, but we have to increase housing opportunities. At the minimum, we had to update the transporter plan, uh, to a lot more housing options on, uh, more of that personnel. Uh, we had to update neighborhood land uses, it's a, to allow more housing opportunities in neighborhoods. Uh, we had to do an EIR, uh, the GCP aspect would, would, uh, be a, a, a different to ECI R. And then we have to do a ballot measure because, uh, ordinance probably more. So if we just focus on what the housing element requires us to do, that, that, that would be a path. Uh, it's a lot of work, a lot of task. But the council has, uh, a long time focus on economic development, on, on the development that will. Uh, increase property value, improve tax revenues, uh, improve, uh. Add, add more people to areas so that they shop and send money to our stores. If there's a demand to add more stores, add more employment, so those people can also shop in stores and, and so on and so forth. But we've adopted a lot of plans, uh, the general plan was adopted in, uh, two thousand nine. Right after that, that renovation started the transporter plan, uh, which was eventually adopted in twenty thirteen. Uh, we adopted the general specific plan in twenty twenty one, but I think. Again, compared to our neighbors, the results have not been much. And so council, uh, set up fire in last week, so we were to do a. Financial assessment of the transporter plan, uh, and what was expected to come out of that was. Uh, we need to update the transporter plan, uh, and, and, uh, do an EIR for that. And if heights were involved, uh, which, uh, the assessment that was provided does recommend increased times. Uh, then you have to do a ballot measure. So the whole point of the mission was, instead of doing this over here, then you do EIR and the ballot measure and the PCT. And this over here, then you do EIR and update the PCT and other stuff, uh, put it all together. Uh, do one EIR, uh, and then after the TCT, do it once. Uh, we need to update the general plan, do it once, but then, as we talked about in May. Look everywhere else too, because EIR takes a tremendous amount of time. Uh, do the TCT, then do insurance line of time, let's look everywhere. And find other changes to the general plan, other changes, uh, to land uses and specific plan and such. Put it all into one package, one EIR, and do it all at once. And so effectively, that's what council agreed to. Um. We walked through the desired outcome of the GCP, that really reinforced we've been achieving. Uh, we're supposed to redefine San Bruno, we're supposed to improve public, provide the ground, to transform the community. Uh, we're supposed to facilitate redevelopment, uh, provide investment, let's take advantage of our location. Uh, continue to transit, uh, uh, therefore, uh, we're supposed to continue to evolve the city as increasingly attractive destination. I didn't make that up, that's literally taken from words on page one of, of the TCT, that was what the, what the. What the council wanted to get out of the transporter plan, very powerful words, but we need to achieve it. Uh, we need refinancing, not enough change that, that, that did that, uh. Not enough improvements, public, I'm fighting, arguing happens, to transform the community, and particularly on the public realm. This is, uh, the TCT called for, we do the streetscape of that, you know, we do the streetscape of San Bruno. San Mateo. We really didn't do that, uh, the GCP had. Funding mechanisms identified that we could have pursued, but it wouldn't be easy, but we couldn't pursue. But we didn't, uh, there's right reasons for that, but we didn't do that, therefore, we didn't, uh, keep that, uh, on the private side. Uh. My argument is through some combination of our policies, regulations, standards, and processes. We did not help redevelopment happen. Uh, I decided processes, uh, and wanted to come back to that, like, you're, like, we're across the board. Again, we can't say it's just economy, but our neighbors found a way to do a lot of that. Uh. We missed opportunities, uh, we all probably know of examples, I'm gonna touch on a couple of them, uh. But those would have been opportunities to make San Bruno a more attractive destination, uh, for. Residents and visitors and businesses and, and so on. So. Jump down to taxes, because. The big push for this initiative is to strengthen our. Our physical power, uh, two thirds of the general fund revenues come from taxes. Which is not really, that, that's normal in, in most of you. This is the breakdown of those tax revenues. The thing down line in yellow, often you'd be. Taxes that come, that are influenced by investment community. Uh, you, property is, is redeveloped, is reassessed. Uh, because for achieving the reassessments likely going to be a very big increase, uh. And, um, it's the biggest, it's always at the top, uh, sales tax. Even taking out some retail stores and putting housing there, when you put more people there. To shop at the other retail stores, you can actually strengthen sales tax. Uh, likewise, if you, you get lucky and you get a retailer that wants to come in, that's great. Uh, business taxes, uh, particularly for office purposes, they pay a lot. On, on, on the business taxes, whereas, uh, small mom and pop don't pay very much, it, it, it's proportionate to, uh, what the business is. And then hotel, and then hotel taxes, uh, I mean, affecting this. But development can help all of these, and we should want to grow the pie to make the number bigger. Right now, for this fiscal year, we're projecting. Uh, forty point three million. Uh, make that bigger, there's more services that, uh, can be provided, and I think if you ever want to cancel, you know, the budget. Um, there's always this struggle of, they want to provide this amount of services, and then they just don't like it. So, let's, let's throw the pie. So let's talk about the town. All four of these cities are vacant, yes, and. Our number is really low. And I think most, most, you know, but they're open. You know what, other cities that don't need hotels. We had a chance for a new hotel. Uh, this was right nineteen ninety's, uh, this was at the newest name site, so it's where the dorms jacked. It was where the now, a founder was going in, uh, which we will hopefully get funded revenue from. But there was about an initiative, uh, uh, well, ordinance twelve eighty four. Uh, required the hotel developer to do a ballot measure, they wanted to do a ten story building. And I, I'm sensitive, I mean, nineteen ninety, a ten story building, what? Uh, but, let's just look at what happened, so nineteen ninety nine, Metro C, uh, prepared. Not by much when you consider asking to be a ten story building, three point two percent more in tax. So then two years later, they think that the measure is seven story max, they tax. But. The project is entered, uh. And I have not talked to the hotel developer, but I can presume the project value dropped, and the project cost went up. Uh, this is right after the dot com bust, so the financing, the, the, the financing cost went up. That measures aren't cheap, uh, and so, while the voters passed it. One could argue, we had a window opportunity, and it closed, and we lost it. And we did, we did some rough math, uh, had that five hundred room hotel been built. That would be bringing you three point five million and twenty twenty five dollars annually. If you remember the past slide, the whole city gets like three point seven, so double, we'd still be far behind our neighbor. But, that's the end. Uh, so. We had a consultant look at the TCT, and one of the charts he had in his report that, uh, I'm now using all over the place, is. Project value and project cost. In a nutshell, and this should make sense to everybody, because this is how it all happened, but the value of whatever. Is less than our pursuit costs or actual cost, we're not gonna do it. Now, in the case of real estate investments, uh, developers don't want a profitable return. In the case of a city, when we do a public project, we don't have to have that, uh, but if it's, if it's, if it's private investment. It's gotta have a return, we would buy high visit, we'd keep the, some return, we would buy, we would buy cards, you know, that will return. Uh, but, but we don't make investments that there's no chance of return, so. But, anyway, the, the consultant recommended a number of things, and, uh, two small parts of it, too, that, that, but. The top one's rate impact, uh, right now, with, uh, uh. Typical construction methods, you need a new story, so these suggesting, or the consultant is suggesting. Make any one that you, that you want in investment, uh, that you okay with, with heights, make it a reset. Um. Silicones get larger because there are other ways to build things, there are new methods happening. That, uh, that could make things not be the cap of, of construction, but. They're easy, uh, also talked about looking at the FAR, the setback, the parking funds, parking space. Uh, all of those could help increase budget value, there are city actions that include that. Then there are other things, there's city actions to reduce soft tax. Uh, it'd be temporarily, this is the recommendation of the consultant, look at certain type of fee waivers or reductions. Uh, temporary, relaxing, inclusionary, uh, and not temporary, streamline the process. Make it so. There are more certainty, uh, there's more, uh, there's more certainty outcome, more certainty costs, uh, more. Certain good timing. And so, this is all great. Uh, probably we're gonna be a, a, but we can't just do this, it doesn't get torn apart. The, the most important thing of the city action is to increase budget value, we need to do that, the other ones are. It may be nominal dependence, uh, FAR is the TCT, the only type of smaller lots, not the bigger ones. The setbacks are all pretty low, uh, for the bigger sites, the setbacks really aren't a problem, living space is not that big. Also, the interesting thing is, housing projects can raise all those standards anyway. Um, but. Hotel thing. So state law has made all these rules that allow housing projects to just ignore local. Government, says, say, say, how do you do it for? They didn't do that for economic development, because they assumed that if a city wants economic development, it's kind of good for yourself. Uh, so if we want to allow, if we have an area that only allows five stories, a housing project can go there. That we, use the best, so it's all, hotel thing, hotel. Passive, uh, ballot measure, so. Anyway, we actually for that, it didn't translate, just going in, in, in the. Uh, there's something I showed the cameras, we were trying to, uh. Emphasize the loss, uh, the, the loss opportunity, these are absolutely nothing from that. Even this line diagrams to try to explain a point. Even this line diagrams to try to explain a point. So we admitted, we have a transe corridor plan, and we have like an expectation on investment over time. They know, that's a vision. Can't threaten, back in the eighties when it was probably hopping, when they had last things, it plays expectation. So the transe corridor plan, I'd argue this happened. Uh, it went up barely, uh, a couple of problems happened here and there. Uh, the argument is that we can do this initiative, maybe we can make the real life start back. We're not gonna close that. Uh, someday we might, but it could start, start going up. Uh, on Bay Hill, Bay Hill started strong. Google came in and started to build the, the, the first phases of construction that's still going on now. But in recent years, uh, with, uh, office demand, they're dropping off. Google's not gonna build a three story, fifty foot tall project with an underground parking structure that costs. Extremely amount of money. I very literally said that, and even if they did say that, I think we would know that, that it just doesn't make sense. So if we don't do anything, what's we build is probably it, and then it just, it just, it flattens. Uh, if we do something, maybe you can start that back. This one is. Uh, the, the green line is a higher slope because there are fewer property owners and property owners with research. Uh. And then the tanker, this is the unique one. There's already, yeah, there, there's already a number of bought. And it's going through the process of doing the new building, doing the new I R, taking on all those costs. There's no green line here, we actually, as, as long as we don't get in the light of the, of, of, of their investment. You know, the mall, the mall, it drops, it's gonna get worse. If the project is approved, and the demo, and accept the target, and, and the theater is gonna really flatten out. But then as they go phases, it's, it's gonna come back down, and it might get close to the original, uh, imaginary line. And then, and then times, every time is the same thing. When it had great tenants, when people were shopping, and when people weren't buying online, great, but then it flat. And, uh, they have a variety of owners out there, they have, uh, private, uh, these, uh. The private agreements that prevent people from doing things, et cetera. Even if we make the rules allow more, it still may not happen there. But if we don't make the rule allow more, if we guarantee it won't happen there. If you make the rule allow more, maybe there is enough value that one of the property owners. Can get into that scene to buy on it, and then start to do the thing. And it's a major thing about this whole initiative is, we know we're doing nothing with it. Cannot guarantee what doing something will do, but we know it'll be better. Okay, so that brings us to goals and objectives. Uh, again, while the secondary results of the development, I think, will be great for the community. Uh. More places to live, potentially more places to shop, more places to work. The main goal is, is our festival, uh, we have to be able to do that. How are we gonna do that? We need to make several more attractive organizations. Uh, we, we need a regular values, housing, economic development policy standard and processes. We need to successfully revive order twelve eighty four. Uh, and Zusa, we have to generate business and, and, and community support for all the policy changes we're talking about. We need to establish funding mechanisms for the street safety, infrastructure improvement. There is, uh, there are examples out there where the city invests in public infrastructure, in the street saves. Private investments is that too. And investment dollars seem to follow investment dollars. I've heard a lot of, uh, insight from folks saying, we're lucky, Alexander bought the property. At Denver, did Alexander have a reputation? When they, they, they do good things. And they build things that cause other investors want to, want to follow. And who, Alexander is doing this here in the building, oh, there's property ownership, I wanna, you know, go with it, so. But likewise, if we get things lined up so that the street safety improvements and unification that we all want can be funded. And it could, it could be programmed and such, and it could start doing it, then that is something. And then we have to establish funding mechanisms to pay for the onboard service cost, the new development does, does have, uh, higher service costs. In a perfect world, if our existing budget was solid. Then there's a fair argument that the new development and the revenues it brings will pay for the increased service cost. The problem is, we're at risk of losing so many sources of revenue. That we need new development to do more than just pay for it, those service costs. So, uh, there are funding mechanisms that we're looking at where, uh, projects can, uh, pay you to the service costs that, uh, that. Uh, that they need. Okay, the strategy, this is, uh. The policy and regulation updates, by the way, the, the, the community engagement, the ballot measure polling, the funding mechanisms and incentives. Uh, this should actually be on the other side, it's not just funding mechanism, we have to establish incentives. The consultant recommend particularly temporary incentives to get the first round of people in. Uh, particularly, when we reach a point where we have, where we are attractive, the economy's strong when we're attractive. Then we don't give incentives. There will be a point where we're either not attracted yet. Or the economy's not quite there, and if we have incentives specifically targeted for key projects. Uh, that could be a, a big boost. And then internal process improvements. So, two of these are directly about increasing part, uh, uh, budget value and decreasing project costs. Uh, two more are about decreasing project costs, soft costs in particular. And then two, the things about the engagement and the polling. We need to listen, learn, share and go to support. I believe that the average residents. Would buy into and believe that some new development is necessary in order to fund the services. But how do you, how do you package that into a message that. Is concise enough that we need, uh, we need to keep their attention, for example, we can't have a group listening to what I'm just pointing now, they're, they're looking at you dog. We want consultants to come in and help us, how, how do we actually make this quick and easy thing? Uh. One of the dilemmas is this mission need to name, we can't call it the random use housing and economic, economic development initiative. We're not trying to name it now, because we're not good at that. We're gonna bring in, uh, we could volunteer, we could get consultants, figure out what do we call this so that it will. It, it, it will resonate, because eventually we're gonna have a ballot. Okay, now the strategy and timeline, it's, it's multi-year, uh, none of this is gonna be quick. The first couple of years is about identifying issues, then they have to develop the solutions, and then we have to implement. Uh, so the first thing happened, uh, council launches. Uh, next, we have to do the R T, we have to get the consulting team on board. We're probably have two straight, two solid years of engagement. At the beginning, the engagement is gonna be about identifying issues, talking about what we're trying to solve, and trying to get people to see that. Then, the engagement is gonna be about specific solutions, we're gonna ask for solutions that, that, that the community and, 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 and businesses have as well. And then we get into actually turning those into actual, uh, ordinances, policies and so on. We need to actually develop the policy, regulation changes, again, it's gonna tie right into these engagements. We need to do the I R. Uh, the R is extremely important, from a legal standpoint, to make sure we are aware, if we're not knowing that, but it is a lot of work. Uh, and that takes a lot of time, but that time gives us more opportunity for the engagement. And to really take the policies and regulations and refine them. We need to develop the funding mechanism and incentives, we need to develop the internal process improvement. This one we turned out even further than that, this, we might not be done with the improvements to the processes at the same time where, for, for, uh. We get to that, we know. Uh. I'm gonna be giving this, a version of this same presentation to the executive team, uh, to a, a quarterly meeting of, of, of managers in the organization. Because none of this works at the internal policy department. Uh. Then, all this still goes up to a ballot measure in twenty twenty eight. Uh, we'll have to do, start the polling, start the ballot like a preparation early, getting up to that. But something the commission raised. To increase heights, we need to do the secret document board before we can develop a ballot. By the way, if you got special ball, what if you just rescind voting for, or change the scope of it, or maybe look at applying, not to the whole city, but maybe only applies to certain areas. Like, for example, maybe it doesn't apply to, uh, any of the transe corridor areas in the development area. I don't, whatever that is, that's not. A secret issue. The ballot measure secret for that would be very, very complex. Therefore, we could get that on the ballot by twenty twenty six. Uh, and so that's been added to the package, again, that came from the planning mission, appreciate that. Where, uh, there's gonna be a new survey this fall, we're building in a question into that about this concept. Uh, we're gonna be building up to, uh, a measure twenty twenty six. Again, that measure twenty twenty six isn't gonna say specifics. It will talk about ordinance twenty fourteen. Uh. Depending on what happens with twenty twenty six, it's possible we won't need twenty twenty eight at all. Or it's possible that the twenty twenty, the scope of the twenty twenty eight dollar measure is gonna be a lot less. Uh, but that's the strategy timeline, uh, again, this is part of, the council adopted the goals, they adopted the strategy timeline. Uh, given the high levels of things will work up over time. And just for context, this is still part of, written me a long list of things we're doing. I outlined the, the section on this chart that we're in right now, for Q one, Q two of F Y twenty five, twenty six. Right now, all of them are happening, uh. We have effectively merged number two and number three. Uh, number two was just economic development and land use, number three was just housing, the whole pitch was, let's combine them. Council groups, so they're, they're going to be combined, and you'll see as we finish these other initiatives. There, there's, there's the ability to focus on, on, on the, and so, uh, we're excited about that. With that, also wanna touch on the things that have happened that maybe is possible. Uh, council increased the general maintenance fee in F Y twenty four, twenty five, and again in twenty five, twenty six. That was specifically designed to fund these initiatives. So, this whole package is not gonna require general fund back. If it did, it wouldn't have been adopted on, on F Y twenty second, because it would have been built into the budget and, and so on and so forth. But we didn't have to, because, uh, we had a, had a funding source. With the support of the planning mission, council, the streamlining ordinance, three sets of S A P fund. Council also added a credit position in last year's budget, funded from the general funding agency as well. So we have funds and we have some S A P passing. Then council, uh, set the priority of the T C P assessment. And in some ways, we all knew we had the increased heights. But now we have an expert going forward to report analyzing all these things, saying we need to do that. Uh, I think that's sort of, that needs a lot more than S A P, the planning permission council sent there, to the voters, in, in my opinion. And then, uh, for planning permission, council endorsed the vision and concept at, at P A S, for the study sessions, and then. Uh, we had that session on land use changes that really exemplified that, this isn't just the government core. Uh, we begin to look everywhere and doing the, the combined approach lets us. Lets us look at the neighborhoods, uh, what can we do to make it better for homeowners there, give them more options, as well as on the current quarter, so. Then, uh, seat even planted, now we're, we're having a exciting point where the start of twenty six, we're gonna be lighting the doors. Uh, conclusions, the same stuff, probably clean, because I said room and stuff, the conclusion. Can you put, I mean, off that, it's the same stuff, uh, and so. I also believe that's the last slide, and, uh, appreciate the, the patience in going through all this. Uh, uh, available then to the person.
No questions, I'm ready, Mr. President.
Thank you for the presentation, and I, um, I wanted to stop, I was looking at the final, are you going to see this up here in the ground? Uh, running the video, do you have, uh, John Rose Park?
Yeah, uh, can you jump, can you press, or, wow. Not pressing it. So, uh, Mills Park is built into the transe corridor. Uh, and had Mills Park happened, uh, that yellow line would have been much cheaper. Uh. But because it did happen, and, uh, uh, without, there's no intention of moving forward with the project. Uh, it's, it's left that kind of, very shallow. Now, we have talked to the owners about, about this initiative, I also worry about state law. They're not ruling out that they may take some of their properties that are, uh, less utilized and, and, and promote project. It's just, it's just not gonna be trying to do the whole, the whole, whole project very advanced.
I, I think it's important in the long, that I think so, it can have an impact to the position from the day that, um. In twenty seventeen, seventeen, I was here, I was in nineteen seventy six, certainly nineteen seventy seven, in my position, in nineteen ninety nine. And watched the impact from those decisions being popular. And in your presentation, it's very clear that if we don't do it, this will be back in twenty thirty or forty, the other line. And it's really the decision to think about that, and so, you know. From the current decision that were made of, you know, voters that made decision, um, on Mills Park. Now, for the event of any of the line, but so we, one from you, in a current situation. In this communication, people can actually see what you're, you're, now back in seventeen, we, we have no person called the N A L division. Or any of the, the, the governor, probably not, but, but, but. But I, I'm like, I have watched the possibility behind the thing, but we have a lot of other feeling. And it's important to reveal, and not, you know, I'm, it's around the situation, and, um, but we're not. These are really pushing important, and so, um, I want to know that it happened to the project and, and prior to the process. So, um. I think probably before. I believe that was such a horrendous process over the years. And I think that, you know, I think that we, but. But we have the relationship between, you know, leadership and it, that it's going to, that it's, um, that would come to the gear, that the council, the council agreement, in the year. So it would be easier for it to be the self-coop. Because we don't have that, it's about the city changes in the graphics, changes in, and then, then there again, you know, it's a completely. That was really dismal, um, sadly, when you think about the other cities and others. Um, but by the way, you know, we are, a lot of, I mean, so. Um but by the way, you know, we are bottom. So I mean, very encouraged by this presentation, very encouraged that that we can move on and amplify on it. When we did that for six years, from twenty five to twenty, we didn't feel like we knew it got so much more. I mean, it may be about the addition.
This is so helpful to hear. And and just like the Commissioner Johnson, I overly agree that um this looks like a really wonderful platform and having consensus among the staff, council, commission. It's great. And I and I thank you for your leadership in making that happen. Um the one thing that I I got lost in the sauce there for a second. So we were going right along to May twenty eight and then you're like, aha, there's this magic secret thing twenty twenty six and I went. What was that? Can you explain that a little bit more until the button?
Okay, so um the way twenty four is written is that the sequel for the thing we put on the ballot has to be done before it's put on the ballot. And in all fairness, in nineteen seventy seven, the sequel was not that hard. Uh yeah, it it maybe yes. Uh now, if it's good, it's uh and it and so so there was I remember at the prior board sessions, uh when when uh we'd be talking about these high terms, there was always frustration. Why did you have to wait for twenty twenty eight? And 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 the vision was always, well, we're important. We have to figure out where do we want to resize. Do the sequel for that. And then that goes on the ballot. You can't get that down through. But then when uh it was at a prior, prior for the community, ideas were brought forward about well, what if you just put something on twenty twenty six or something? And I've been also, well, maybe not even just rescind it, what if just changes to your record there, something that not you changing twenty four, you're not doing a ballot measure that is triggered by twenty four.
My answer, if I understand correctly, what twenty four applied is that if you want to be a segment, you have to go to people for a vote. Right? If you change that rule, that you have to let people vote, that doesn't break height limit anywhere. It just says the city council can't raise height limit. You still have to do the D I R for the range of height limits. But now you don't have to do the D I R and then also ask people for a program, the city council, right? So like the shifting the authority, probably the voters, the people to the city council does not itself require any I R, right? If we didn't go to raise height limit, you would have got on that, but you would know you wouldn't have risked doing the whole I R and then getting rejected now. Because you have to, when you start the I R, if they know that you're not.
Right.
Yes.
And so that that allows us to take something forward sooner. That that if they're successful could be very helpful in the future. And uh we we uh as the experts, even if not successful, we will gain information to help make twenty eight successful. So in the home of, it it is an investment, it is an investment in the future either way.
Thank you for telling me that.
Yeah. Right. I mean, we've started thanks to how we now really do the plan. So and the album name, Eric, who's doing the digital, the word, you know, and do the
Yeah, I love it. Really fun, but um I'd say, you know, thank you, if we step further, think about what the city is going to do, push it a while faster. I'd say that single project, you know, future initiative, that, you know, whatever it is, that people are really excited to get during the year. I don't know what it means for the city, but we usually think of that further, um pushing that behind it, but you're intelligent. I know you're there.
Well, and and maybe we will then be relying on you as a as a planning commissioners who you're you're you have one foot in the city and uh in in city policy law and one foot in the community, more so than 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 we can do. Uh also, we rely on council. Uh everything you said, absolutely yes, and more. And then and 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 the whole thing also that we have these type of conversations more and we're very strategic and careful with it. I think there's a lot of the business we need, large and small, that when they hear this, we'll 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 start with, we'll start with the fiscal part and then the paper service. And then get them to the part of, hey, should we do something about this? And then then it, oh, what can we do? Well, we can do this. And just start this, have that conversation, go that the 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 goal of of this is that because the the seat can't necessarily uh advertise, you know, for ballot measure. But businesses can, and the members can, and so on. So so yes, to every degree, uh this is going to rely, this success is going to rely on uh many people sharing, sharing information, sharing the sort of, which is why the time could actually be helpful.
One of that. Um and I think the example of that first thought, that is a really good, is the argument that ten years later, that would have been pretty thing, but three point five million on here. So, you know, like um ten million in the last, yeah, so I'm sure it's like I heard a way of presenting to people is like, what is the call, where everybody in the ballot area is remembering the heart. And what have you decided um wanted to replace in the river, for the like, what is the budget of that? That's somewhere I would have been like, they like, just that one project, if you didn't get that enough. We couldn't have paid for all of this, like, already, we could have been done twenty years ago. I feel like that's the kind of document. Um I think like, but you go numbers to it and like, for every neighborhood, what is the capital for a program that you want? One project worth paying for. And so if you can project, that's what we do, like, we go the entire presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um um on height limit, I'm a bit of a rough background in, but I I sort of feel like, yeah, they have a little value there. Height limit, but nobody can build a thirty story building, but they they wouldn't want many, right? The city doesn't know what happened. But like, I don't know, it's already twelve stories, you get a month or whatever, like and you didn't get rid of height limit, you say about like the S A A S height limit, like I don't know. Um somebody's thinking about that, I sort of feel like you know, they're all ready, like, pass limit, work on any box, then you don't know if you're getting anyone, literally, we can't, and people were getting the S A A S limit anyway. It's like showing that empire and you go left and so on, they go, I don't know the exact number, it's probably something like twelve, thirteen stories, it's it's going to cut out. I sort of feel like we need to actually be serious to think about just abolishing height limit in the standard order. Uh you did entirely, and letting the S A A S, you know, like that. Um I'm sure whether the whole process, like it changes on our knowledge obligation, because if we can't, you know, honestly, raise from the evidence, any of ours. If you don't have, if we're going to start having all obligations, or then we're going to like, this all zone authority, you can build it there. Um that costs, I think, some votes. Um S P thirty five as well, right? We know that um we have two S P thirty five chapters, you know, it'd be something nice around the city to be pretty, you're getting that housing without that, it needing a supplement that we are no longer subject to the the very minimum S P thirty five. Um and my last thought uh on sales taxes. Do you understand correctly that there was a meaning place now when somebody buys something, and you want to have it, you put an address in the number, you don't have that, that's I mean, pretty safe, but like, like the argument, you go, sales taxes actually didn't collect the intent for value, or they're going to
Yes, they are.
Yeah. So the the concept of how many people have e-commerce ship with their house, that is sale tax per
Right. So based on like the most recent like sales tax analysis data, Amazon is one of like the largest contributors to like the sales tax revenue for the city's number.
Yeah, I think that's definitely something for people that understand that it's like, if you have a struggling retailer, it's for the departments, that almost certainly really does buy sale taxes. You know, those people use the, we can't really go with that, especially barbers, that all of their Amazon purchases are going to be a little bit are true, and that's why. But the whole kind of, right, I mean, the classic, the way you got to where we are, wasn't that going with like, oh, you know, housing, you got to even move in, make services, are you cool, like, whereas like, oh, they're a business in, like, they'll be like, in fact, we're going to want to pay services, it's a better, but initially, it's not true. Like, it's like, they there, but like, we we shouldn't think of housing as a government cost.
Yeah, um I don't know, I'll, a comment if I have, um uh I have to, I actually do a lot of that work, because I think that's an easy moving forward, see, just another message to the whole problem is would be the whole city public to improve that. I mean, that's mainly the message, because I think moving is full. You know, you pick a consultant and a message and learn messaging and very challenging. Uh if you want this to go by twenty twenty, I think we what's there is
on the, you know, here, for the one that, um, that's something, is that, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, especially after the, you know. Once that starts to go up in construction and people are driving by, a major girlfriend is in there, they're looking at, they have to go, you're probably going to be worried. You buy that, they're dead. We need to understand, we do not, this was an S P thirty five project, right? And then if we had been building enough, right, through our normal contact, this would not have happened. For you, let's go there, that's how you, that's how it's public, so we need to think about that very currently, you know.
Yes, and one of the, I mean, we have, there's there's no question that there's no question that uh uh we're going to get a lot more calls. I think that's the thing with that. The 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 one thing that we've thought about here is I mean, that's accepted, and it's like, it's similar to that. Whatever, whatever you do, the same allows it. And more of it is all affordable. And it's great to have the way down with them, affordable, you think it'd be, one that could. But that's the way to maximize profit is to go to a city where the only thing that can be built that's tall is affordable housing. Then then, I mean, let's just say there's there's a hotel buyer who wants to look like a cylinder town. And they're competing against a housing developer that can do, they depend. And like, what what's that property they're supposed to do? You know, property that's sold to the person that have, you know, and so part of this is about leveling the playing field for economic development. If 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 and when people hear about the tax rate you get from a hotel, they might go, okay, fine. But we can't allow the hotel to get to that height. And 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 so but yes, we're going to be relying very heavily on uh the best experts that we can find for for the messaging and and such because uh
You got to convince this, you're very common social, you're gonna thirty seconds sound bite, because that's about everybody's attention.
Well, well, maybe fifteen.
Well, yeah, yeah. The 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 break of the year.
And that's that's the thing, I look at this, we're in both sides. I think I'm nervous you would what you're proposing in the direction, to be selling to the public by twenty twenty eight. You know, can we do that? That's the biggest worry right there.
Right. I I agree that messaging is a really big thing, but I also have a lot of faith in the public where you're right. I mean, for for San Bruno, I think it's just helping to understand that, and yeah, it definitely needs to be talked about. Because if all of a sudden, I was sitting there, and I was like, uh, but yeah, it's sort of helping them to uh to take it all in.
Sure. I still want to be all about that, that's the idea, because someone's extended in the yard. So I think at minimum, doing that, allowing further upgrades within the quarter, and so they do all that, I mean, I don't know, that sounds troubling, so it's not bad. Anyway. Uh maybe this thing is city hall, probably, I guess.
You have anything?
I was just going to note that council um proposed to introduce the ordinance, even the city council, obviously, the U C. Yeah.
What was it?
Uh planning commission reviewed and ordinance recommended to both the city council and city council on July twenty second, they've introduced that ordinance. Um and it will go on August twenty sixth for adoption.
That was a reason, city hall, property, library, cinema, fire station, it had more to it, but it was, it was to take it was simplify the zoning of the piece of the area that that had certainly small districts, any of this.
Well, from those cars, that time it sold on the theater project, that can be better.
Thank you very much. With this, there will be a lot more time, there will be more updates. Um I'm very very excited about it, because uh when I first started, we talked about, the planning commission, do you rather do homes? Or things more like planning to get three things. Uh and I think this is it.
Sure, I think you're right. Yeah, I honestly, I'm anxious to be able to project and let any people out, I'm really, I wish I knew good what you got to help us turn the nation, and you know, it's so important to me, you know. Just establishing the long range plan and then letting people have to do plans, like, I wouldn't actually expect that. Anyway. Um, that it for two more comments, and instead of encouraging that, and then we just now are I mean, are you the staff, I think the members for the end meeting?
I have a few updates from staff. Um so I'll start with the Tampering Project. Um the D I R public comment story closed on August eleven. Um there was a public comment, a public community meeting um in earlier in the images, in, I think it was in the last meeting, it was a week or so. Um and about this, some people came saw and provided comments. We'll also do, um, we got some requests for a general community meeting outside of state E I R. So we'll also be holding a community meeting at the Tampering, um, it was called Engagement Center, um, on the twenty eighth of this month. Um, we also had seven thirty two Alcino Real, which is the second occupancy at the end of July, so that's the best is now completed and they're opening out soon. And then we have a few other updates. Um we did hire a planning manager, we're very excited. It was Rocco Motta, who was the planning manager for nobody previously, and he starts at the beginning of September.
You know, very good development of the, what's that?
Nice to get. I do not know, but you can all ask him.
Five years.
Yeah, I mean, I do have five years, you know, we would have been, had five times on that, okay. Um, the other members, I would, we still haven't done that.
Yeah, because I just want to say, thank you, Stan, for, 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 so this is, I can just see there, there's a mountain of work that you guys have done so far. In the time and thought, man, you put it, put it so thing, you have to do that.
Yeah, and this is the sort of thing that I have wanted to work on, since I joined the commission, that is, years ago, whenever I was in seven, um, so, very, so. Um. That does sound like you, you know, and, and uh, we are adjourned, our next regular meeting is, is uh, sixteen, September, I think. Fifteen, ninety five.
No, not the.
I think that that was a typo, but sixteen. Yeah, regular Q guys, sorry about that.